And Reverend William will lead us in vacation prior to.
Let us pray, O eternal God, Father of us all, we give thanks for allowing us to assemble and reassemble in this, the People's Chamber, once again. This being the season of Lent leading up to Easter gives us the opportunity, not only to give up something, but also to take on something. We pray for our mayor's wife, First Lady King, to have a speedy recovery. We pray for our mayor and council, administrative staff, all employees, families, and residents of the city of Goldsboro. Grant O Lord that in this meeting tonight, some things might be done that will be for the benefit of the poor, the young, the old, the middle-aged. Bless our President, his administration, all elected officials, our nation, and all nations. We ask these blessings in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I know our hard-working clerk has just been waiting to have a roll call, so would you call a roll call? Here.
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 Thank you ma'am. We're all here. We have minutes for approval, work session and regular meeting Monday, January 7th, and work session and regular meeting of January 22nd.
Move to adopt.
That motion.
Second.
Under second. Any corrections or comments? Or additions? Here, not all in favor of the motion, lady, but I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Public comment period. We set aside this time for anyone who would like to take up to three minutes to address this subject of their choosing. Yes ma'am, would you please come forward and give us your name and mail and address?
My name is Dr. Angela Kearney. My maiden address is 123 New Hope Village Drive here in Goldsboro, 27534.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Dr. Angela Kearney, and I live in District 2 of Goldsboro. I am here tonight to speak about the front-page story in yesterday's Goldsboro News Argus, Too Many Cats in the City. I am one of those people who regularly feed, water, and provide vet care, including spay, neuter, and vaccinating the cats behind Furniture Fair on Ash Street, the specific feral cat colony named in yesterday's article. Additionally, we worked to socialize the cats in order to find them homes, and so far we have placed several of the cats. My family, friends, and I, many of whom are here tonight, have been managing this specific feral cat colony for approximately one year. Many other residents in Goldsboro and Wayne County feed, vaccinate, and find homes for these cats and in other colonies. We are practicing the humane and scientifically-supported practice of trap, neuter, return, also known as TNR. We oppose the proposed feeding ban for four specific reasons. First, feeding bans do not work and are not scientifically-supported. Second, feeding bans encourage cats to roam, roam further actually, to find food, making them more visible, which actually increases calls to animal control. Third, feeding bans are difficult to enforce and ignore the real issues in the community which deserve law enforcement and animal control attention. Fourth, feeding bans and the attempted enforcement are a waste of taxpayer dollars when resources are already limited. Additionally, the cats that are not socialized will not be adopted, rather they will be an expense to euthanize. We are currently providing our own private funds for the efforts that we are doing now. I support my efforts, along with numerous other volunteer efforts, to continue feeding, trapping, spay, neuter, and vaccinating and returning these homes, I'm sorry, these cats to their homes. I support our efforts for four specific reasons. First, animal welfare history across the country shows that trap, neuter, and release is the only effective way of reducing the feral cat population. Literature and scientific studies clearly demonstrate all other methods fail. Most recently, in June, the Wake County Board of Commissioners unanimously passed a TNR ordinance specifically for feral cats in Wake County. Secondly, colonies involved in TNR diminish in time, in size over time because no new kittens are born. Third, our practice of TNR improves cats' lives because it relieves the constant stress of mating and pregnancy. It also reduces the disturbing and mating behaviors such as roaming and fighting. Fourth, feeding and providing medical care improves cats' health. Not only are cats being vaccinated against rabies, but well-fed cats, much like people, are less likely to be sick with other illnesses. In conclusion, I encourage you to continue to allow local efforts to manage these cat colonies. We are being successful in our efforts. The problems in Goldsboro that require your attention and the attention of law enforcement are many. However, feral cat colonies are not one of those issues. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Before you sit down, I have a question.
Yes. Sorry.
Are you working with other shelters for placement?
We are. There's a lady in Durham, and currently we have a better deal financially in carrying these cats to Durham and having them spay there. We are working with SNAP here in Goldsboro, and we are getting some vouchers from Dr. Barfield, but currently we have found, since we are doing this with our own money, that Durham is offering us the best deal. Are there other questions?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to run off.
That's all right.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes ma'am. Would you give us your name and mail and address?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I am Sylvia Barnes, and I reside at 1708 Laurel Street here in the city of Goldsboro. And my concern tonight is, is that I spend a lot of time on North William Street. I go to church, at a church on North William Street. And my concern is the young people that I see crossing that busy street, North William Street, between Green East Christian Church and the stoplight and back. There are a lot of children that live in the Alpha Arms apartment, and since that Dollar General store opened, they are frequently running back and forth. And I was approaching the City Council tonight to see if a study could be done, or could a walkway or something be put there for the safety of those young children, or a warning sign or something that they would see. I would hate to, even inside of the church sometime, when I'm in there working, I hear tires, you know, screeching because children are darting back and forth. It is a wide street. There is a stoplight there, but it's after you pass by the new Dollar General. The people are very excited about having that store there, and it has been a really, really joy to especially some of the older people that live in the village, in Grace Village, because they have access to that store. But I just wanted to bring that to the councils tonight and see if it's anything that can be done, or a study or something of that nature. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your concern, and we hear you, and we will do it. Anyone else like to speak? No, we will move on to presentations, and you see a group of senior citizens sitting back here with special hats and costumes on. Well, don't say anything bad about them because they are veterans, and these guys have seen a lot of things in their lives, and they don't put up with much stuff right now, so I'm glad to have them here, and they have a message to give us. And I think Bill Graham is the spokesperson, but if you'd like to have all of them stand so that we can see that you're, yeah, these are my guys here. I, we speak the same language.
Mr. Mayor.
You don't have to, you don't have to remain standing. We just wanted to hear.
Mr. Mayor, gentlemen, I stand before you with a lot of pride tonight. We have a proposal we'd like to present to you. My name is Bill Graham. Currently, I am the President of the Wayne County Veterans and Patriots Coalition. I also serve as Commander of the Veterans Foreign Wars, Goldsboro Post 2615. These are my gentlemen, they've been following me now for a couple of years or so. I'd like for them to introduce themselves if at all possible.
That would be fine.
I'm Al Reed, Commandant of the Marine Corps and League, Member of the BFW, American Legion, and Secretary of Defense of Veterans Coalition.
My name is Danny Johnson. I'm Senior Vice Commander of 2615, Veteran of the War. First, Vice President of the Wayne County Veterans and Patriots Coalition, and I am currently a member of seven different Veterans Coalition organizations.
My name is Brian Mole. I live on the outskirts of Goldsboro. I'm a member of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, 657 Goldsboro, and also a member of the American Legion Post 11, retired.
Chaplain Boyd. I'm Chaplain for the American Legion, Marine Corps and League, and the Wayne County Veterans Coalition.
Don't play this guy frisbee golf, okay? Yeah, he's a ringer man, don't.
Still does, you is. In fact, he's wanting to collect any.
He's, don't play him.
My name is Gary Bell. I am past President of the Fleet Reserve Association, Branch 204. I'm also a member of American Legion Post 11, BFW Post 2615, the Marine Corps and League, 1350, and I'm also Chaplain for the BFW. I'm Chaplain also for the Alliance of Retired Military, and I can, wow, have I ever felt so unworthy?
But you know who you told me you are.
The bouncer.
He's the bouncer.
I've got to give these guys out of trouble.
Yeah, he's the bouncer.
I'm Kirk Keller. I'm with the Foundation of Wayne Community College, and it's an honor to serve these guys as their worker bee. Thank you.
Before you, before you proceed, I'd like for everyone in here to at this time stand and say thank you to you guys for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you can see from the hats that we're all wearing right now, we're representing the different organizations, but as Danny so stately stated, we are members of at least seven, probably eight to nine different Veterans organizations altogether. We all work together, we come under one umbrella, and we try to do the good work of veterans everywhere. We have several causes that we are working on right now, one of them Operation Wounded Warrior under the Coalition. We're making regular trips over to Camp Legearne at Wounded Warrior Battalion East, and we're treating these guys firsthand, face-to-face, with barbecues and pickpickings and things of that nature, plus we do take time to sit down with them face-to-face and listen to their stories. We just now have picked up Fort Bragg Wounded Warrior Transition Barracks and working with them. We also have an active campaign going on, Operation Care, that we are sending care packages to our deployed troops, and we've made several, several, several shipments over there already. Those are just two of the things that we're doing. As you well know, we put on the Memorial Day Service every year out at Wayne Community College. Last year, for our first time around, we presented the Purple Heart Banquet out at Walnut Creek and appreciation to all the City Council members for their input in that. But now we're working on something that is probably one of the greatest ventures that we've ever encountered, and that is Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall, the wall that heals coming to Goldsboro on the 16th of April. We have a lot of activity planned for that. It's going to be here for a four-day run through, it will tear down and depart on the 22nd of April, but we have three full-day events planned, actually four counting Saturday. Thursday morning, Brigadier General Dan Cherry will be our keynote speaker at the opening ceremony. We will have a battlefield cross exemplification done. Friday at 6 o'clock in the evening, we will have our KIA ceremony. We have 145 names that we will be representing on that wall, 40 of them from Wayne County alone. And we have, we have enlisted the six surrounding counties, two Wayne County, to partake with us in that ceremony, and representative from their, one of their Veterans organizations to come in and read the names from their county. That is, that is going to be probably the most heavily-attended ceremony that we're looking for with the 145 names represented. There will be a candlelight ceremony, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts both will be participating in that, as well as JROTC units from all the schools. Saturday, I think Kirk can say better, we're going to be doing letters from home, some of the names represented on the wall, the last letters that they wrote to their families, and letters that the family wrote to their, their sons and daughters. We're setting time aside, 2 o'clock in the afternoon on Saturday, I believe it is, to have, have that done. Also, on Sunday, we are doing a POW MIA ceremony. Colonel Levitt, 4th Fighter Wing Commander, will be the keynote address on that, and we will be presenting a POW MIA table. So we're just looking for a lot of, of great things to happen with that. With that being said, we're standing before the City Council tonight for some assistance in bringing this. We have a budget that we have worked up, and we have some fundraising efforts in effect, but we're not able to get to that final end of the budget, so we were hoping to stand forward to Council tonight and see what can be done. At this time, I want to ask Kirk Keller to come up and let him say something about the school programs, what we're doing with them.
You mean the bouncer?
The bouncer, yes sir.
Like a large canary walking up here with all these suits. My name is Kirk Keller, 2000 Stevens Court, Goldsboro. Thank you, gentlemen. It's an honor to be a part of this group, and so unworthy do you feel when you're participating, but they do their best to make me feel a part. I've been tasked with bringing in the education part with these school systems. What we've undertaken with the help of Dr. Taylor and Dr. McCullen, who have been very instrumental in working with us, we're going to do an essay contest, three different events, actually. It's going to be the middle school, the junior high, and the senior high, with each monetary awards for the best essay. Of course, the difficulty rises to the senior, which is going to be a 750-word essay. We're also going to have posters that are going to be awarded, the best award for those same groups. They'll be judged, and the winners will be put up for viewing in the atrium at the Wayne Community College, and also will be put in a vault, a time vault, to be open 20, well, actually be two. One will be open 25 years from now, the other 50 years from now. We're really trying to educate our public schools and all the other schools that are even the home schools, of what we're doing and the significance of these men and women that gave all. And what better venue could there be than this? And again, I'm honored, and I hope you are too, to have this event happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. It is going to be a huge event. We've already been in contact with several of our State Departments and other representatives throughout, and we have been informed that if we carry this thing the way we need to carry it, the way we are carrying it at this moment, we should expect no less than 40,000 in attendance to this wall over the four-day event. Forty thousand is a pretty good number.
Pretty good number, yes.
We originally had B-52 flyover scheduled for opening ceremony, and F-15E flyover for the closing ceremony, and we were called in sequester. So we've had to go to private sources that were not brought forth in our budget, so we've had to go to private sources to get some of that. We will have a parachute team, Special Forces Association parachute team, will be doing an opening ceremony. We have been told that we've got to come up now with funds for any of the, any of the association events that we're planning for fuel drop-ins or whatever. We'd like also to enlist the assistance of the travel and tourism, that we can get some billboards, maybe they can sponsor at least four billboards to all the gateways into Goldsboro, if that can be done. We have a figure on that, that we've been negotiating with. I can share that with you as well. The other thing is that during the setup periods, during the running periods with our disabled, not just our veterans, but any disabled citizen of Goldsboro, handicapped or otherwise, that they are going to need transportation and shuffling from the parking lots to the seating area. We are requesting the use of maybe six golf carts from the municipal golf course, if that's possible. We ran into a situation today with parking out at the college because there are a couple of other events going on too, and I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, if this needs to be presented to you or to the county about use of a small gateway van, a maybe 20-passenger van that we can use to shuffle, you know, parking maybe a mile or two miles away.
You might make the request to them as well, but it's a joint venture and we'll sure get with them.
Okay. And I think I can probably wrap up with asking one final thing. Governor Beverly Perdue, before she left office, was so willingly accepting that she brought the state of North Carolina into the National Military Order of the Purple Heart. North Carolina is now an official military or the Purple Heart-recognized state. And we're, I'm standing before you with these gentlemen today to ask you if we can get a letter from the City Council to the Department of North Carolina and to the National Department of the MOPH requesting Goldsboro to be a Purple Heart city.
We'd be glad to.
And with signage at all the gateways coming in.
We'd be glad to do that, absolutely.
All right. I appreciate your time, I really do, and we appreciate whatever you can do for us to help us get this thing underway.
What's your budget? We just, I never.
I do have a budget with me, if you care to look at it.
I'd just like to know what you're asking for.
Twenty-five thousand dollars is the total cost of our budget. We have already been presented 5,000 from the county, which they did, I understand, an unofficial challenge, but, you know, we're kind of looking, not saying greater or anything, we're kind of looking with, the airshow's been canceled, this has been canceled, that's been canceled, maybe we can, maybe we can go beyond that a little bit.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gentlemen, y'all take care, have a good evening.
We have, I've been talking with this group for some time about this event, and I thought it was essential that you hear what they're saying, because if you read about it, it's one thing, but to hear from them and to see the support that we have here, how can you say no to these guys? I'm a Vietnam Vet, and I have.
You're one of that fan.
I had the distinction of serving in the most attack base in Vietnam for a year. We called it Rocket Alley, and I survived it. I might not have it all here, but I'm, but I'm here.
You're very welcome, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay. We do have another presentation, eagle photo presentation, Park Two Red.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm going to introduce the two gentlemen behind me, and then I'm going to get out of the way. Joining me this evening is Jody Dean, one of our PGA pros out at the Goldsboro Municipal Golf Course.
Why isn't he playing golf?
It's dark.
Oh, that's a good, that's a good reason.
And then Horace, I thought there were two people behind me, but one didn't come, but Horace Best, there we go, Horace Best is actually, his work is what's featured in what we're presenting to y'all this evening.
Thank you.
Oh, I am a true believer that God works in mysterious ways, and by having the veterans here tonight is really a great prelude to what I'm going to be doing also, and I salute them, every one of them. For those of you who may not know me, my name is Jody F. Dean, and I bring you greetings from Goldsboro Parks and Recreation and the Municipal Golf Course. Halitus leucocephalus, halitus leucocephalus, or as those in the bird-watching community commonly refer to as the American bald eagle. I stand here before you tonight with the privilege and honor of presenting to the mayor, city council, guests, and citizens of Goldsboro, North Carolina, a beautifully-framed picture of the pair of nesting bald eagles that resided at Goldsboro Municipal Golf Course. Not only did they make a home at the golf course, but also raised a baby there as well. All this took place in the fall and winter of 2012 and spring of this year. What makes this very unusual is that the bald eagle is a solitary bird, in that it doesn't usually nest or raise young around a population of humans. It likes to nest high up in a lone tree, mostly around a larger body of water where it can prey on its favorite food, which is fish. Our bald eagles built their nest on hole number 14 in the top of a pine tree in the middle of Goldsboro. If that is not unusual in itself, it also wasn't but a pitching wedge distance away from any golfer playing the 14th hole. As for food, at the golf course, we have a number of small ponds, which in turn do not support a large number of fish, of which the majority are mostly grass-eating carp. This is surely not enough to attract and sustain a pair of bald eagles and its young, which has a very healthy appetite. But we do, or should I say did, have squirrels, and lots of them. It wasn't unusual for a golfer to be driving down hole number 14 and have to dodge these little creatures. I am assuming that this was one of the eagle's main prey while they lived with us, because a squirrel is hard-pressed to be seen now anywhere on the golf course.
I bet they are.
But what a magnificent and glorious sight these special visitors reported, the lucky few that had a chance to observe them, either in flight or on their nest. An eagle with a total wingspan of anywhere from six to eight feet, flying around on our course, your golf course, would make anyone swell up with pride. The only regret that I have is that I wish more people could have experienced and failed what I did, the respect, pride, and admiration for our national symbol. How we at the golf course came across this beautiful picture that I have the honor to present tonight is another story. Having both played many rounds of golf at Goldsboro Municipal Golf Course, Mr. Horace Best and I go back a long way. One day at a local pharmacy, I happened to run into his wife. We discussed the normal pleasantries as two people who haven't seen each other for a long time do, and during this discussion, I inquired about Horace and how his golf game was going. Mrs. Best explained that Horace doesn't play as much golf now as he used to, and that he was into wildlife photography. As a matter of fact, she told me he was taking pictures of a bald eagle that he had located off of Highway 111 north towards Snow Hill behind a furniture store called the Red Barn. The only problem was that he had to travel a long distance down dirt roads and through the woods to get to their nest. Well, of course, a light bulb went off in my head, and I started telling her about our bald eagles, and for her to tell Horace that he was welcome to come take pictures of ours at any time he wanted. It wasn't much later that Horace did just that. Many days, he arrived at the course just after sunrise, packing his equipment of a camouflage blind and a camera, well, it had a lens that looked to be about eight feet long into a golf cart, and headed out to hole number 14, where he would patiently sit for hours on end to observe and take pictures. Well, at this time, I do want to correct myself on an earlier statement, but I said Horace Best was into wildlife photography. What I should have said, and judging by the quality of his pictures, that he is a professional wildlife photographer. Mayor King, city council members, guests, and citizens of Goldsboro, at this time, we would like to present this beautiful-framed portrait of the Goldsboro Municipal Golf Course bald eagles.
Oh, man. Wow. Look at those. That's gorgeous. Extraordinary. You know, I've never seen both of them sit together. I think I saw them once like that, and I'd go by the, and I'd look for them, and it took me a long time before I could even see them. And late one afternoon, there they are standing up there, and that's just gorgeous.
I think we need to hear from the photographer himself, Mr. Best.
Mr. Horace Best?
Mayor, you don't fool the.
Mayor, you don't pull the ball, you push the ball. That's why you never.
Is that why? No, I'm gonna, I would love to, but I'm gonna give it to Scott, and they'll find the appropriate place to put it. I heard about you doing this.
Oh, you did?
Oh, I did.
I spent many hours out there, really, it really did.
I'm told that you did, and look at, look at this. That is just absolute.
That's the, the female on the left, she's the biggest one of pair in eagles and hawks.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Do you think that they will have permanent residence, or they might move on to some other place maybe?
My feeling is not. I don't know exactly why, but they normally nest every year, and there's no sign of them this year, they've already, they nest early, so they would have been there if they were going to be.
They're gone.
You've seen them one time, hadn't you seen them?
Yeah, there are occasions.
They do come back?
I've seen them at my farm.
But I haven't played for quite a while, so I don't know if, but I have not been out there to see them.
But they, from what I understand, I haven't been back really since, Jody told me, you know, they were not back, but they typically just keep getting that nest bigger and bigger and bigger, and it becomes humongous. The one down 13 you were talking about, it's just, it's huge, but it's, they, it's been there for 10 years. So, I'm afraid this one.
Maybe they'll stay with it.
Maybe they will.
I hope so. It's a lot of fun to watch them.
Oh, it is, it really is. And I've got some, you know, individual photos of the individual birds, but I got a couple like that, and that to me is, and they sit over behind the green, just a little bit to the left, and watch the nest, and that's really what they're doing there. They're still being, going through the protective phase, early on. Once he becomes mobile and a little more aggressive himself, they'll leave him alone. But they'll sit back there and watch. But I really did enjoy that, and I appreciate Joey, Jody, telling my wife about it, because I spent many hours out there.
One of the greatest things that happened at our golf course is these bald eagles. When I, when I, they first told me that, I said, "I'll come on." No, no, you can see them, but they wouldn't let me see them for a long time, I did hide. But I finally got to see them a number of times, beautiful.
Really enjoyed it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your co-words.
Thank you. Jody, thank you, thank you, guys. I'll keep it. I guess we'll go now to the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, you had a number of items on your consent agenda, items E through R. Again, your consent agenda were items E through R.
Move to adopt, say.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions before we have a roll call vote? None, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mayor King?
Yes.
Mayor President Biden?
Yes.
Councilmember Broadway?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodman?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Rayco?
Yes.
Thank you. Consent agenda's approved. Are you requiring individual action? We have one.
Mayor, you have one item, and I'd ask our Development Services Director, Randy Guthrie, to take us through that.
Item S, zoning request by Pearl Southeast LLC, in case Z-1-13. Property is located on the west side of West Lock Haven Drive. Here is on Lock Haven Drive here, property shown here in the hatch pattern between Wayne Memorial Drive and Norwood Avenue. They're requesting to rezonate the property from ONI-1 to R6 Residential Conditional District. The property has 5.7 acres and lot area. Once again, this is the subject property here in the hatch pattern. Property due north is an R6. You have some R16 property located here to the west, some R12 and R16 property here to the southwest, you have some general business property to the south, and some R9 property located here to the east. The applicant has requested a conditional district designation, which would limit the use of the property to a 72-unit multifamily apartment facility. The city's confidence in land use plan is shown here, shows existing residential for everything shown in yellow. You have some commercial showing up along Wayne Memorial Drive, some, here in the green is some conservation land to the northeast, and some industrial here way off to the north, here north of Norwood Avenue. A valid protest petition has been submitted with this request. This petition will require that six out of seven council members vote affirmatively in order to approve the rezoning request. As you can see here, all the lots shown in red constitute a valid protest. It's more than 5%, so it would require that supermajority, six out of seven member vote to approve the request. Here's some pictures of the property, an aerial photo, it shows a single family here to the north and to the southwest, some various pictures of the property. There's the senior apartment complex under construction to the northeast, some other pictures. Submitted preliminary plans indicate three, three-story buildings, proposals containing 24 units each, and this is their first preliminary plan, that shows a connectivity point here to the south, a connection off of Lock Haven Drive, and three apartment buildings as shown here, as well as a clubhouse with associated buffers and parking lots. At the public hearing held on January 22nd, four people spoke in opposition to the request, and two people appeared and spoke in favor. The attorney speaking for the applicant requested that the planning commission defer action on this request until their meeting on February 25th, 2013. While that meeting was deferred, the applicant hosted a neighborhood meeting on Tuesday, February 12th, and invited the residents in the area, which approximately 15 residents attended, and they actively participated in a work session, sending on revising the applicant's plans to address the concerns of the adjoining property owners. And there were two main concerns discussed and addressed in a letter attached to your agenda memo. Number one was location of the northernmost building. The building has been repositioned so that it's oriented the same as the other buildings, rather than backing up to adjacent properties. And this is the building under unquestioned right here, the northernmost building, and they revised the site plan to make it essentially run parallel with its property line here, as opposed to perpendicular, as shown on the original plan. Each building will be approximately 170 feet from the closest home along 12th Street, leaving an additional acre of unused green space, and according to the applicant, all in attendance were in favor of this change. Number two was a barrier to minimize foot traffic. Those in attendance examined several options, including landscaping, fencing, et cetera, and it was a consensus that a six-foot-tall white solid panel vinyl fence would be constructed, and it's shown here with this solid line here along the northern property line, and along this property line here provided physical barriers, so people couldn't just walk back and forth between the property lines. It was about 975 lineal feet of fence, it would be about a $25,000 investment by the developer. The revised conceptual plans have been submitted and were presented to the planning commission at their meeting on February 25th. They recommended approval of the conceptual plans subject to revision of access to Norwood Avenue. The planning commission felt that more than one point of ingress and egress would be necessary to ensure the safety of apartment residents, as well as other residents in the area. The applicant revised his plans to show a connectivity point here going to Norwood Avenue to the north, and he took a portion of this building and relocated here to this corner of the property here. Staff would recommend that council adopt an ordinance changing the zoning for the property from Office Institutional 1 to R6 Residential Conditional District to allow a 72-unit multifamily apartment facility, due to it being assistant with our current land use plan. And based upon discussion at the briefing, staff would recommend that council, if you're inclined to rezonate the property, you would do it subject to approval of site plans at a later date, particularly during our formal site plan review process. That would allow more discussion to occur regarding this interconnectivity point or possible other options for interconnectivity, as well as building placements on the property. So essentially, the recommendation would be to approve the zoning, with it being understood that it would be further discussion regarding the exact placement of buildings and interconnectivity points in the future.
Thank you, sir. Any questions to Mr. Guthrie before we vote?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to accept regulations of the planning commission and adopt an ordinance changing the zoning from property from Office Institutional 1 to R6 Residential Conditional District, and allow the 72-unit multifamily apartment facility, and number two, approve the conceptual site landscape plan subject to provision of access and ingress and egress from a second means, whether it's Norwood Avenue, but it can be determined by the applicant, the neighborhood, and the staff as part of the site plan phase. And I'd also like to be sure that we include the neighbors in this site plan phase, since a lot of these changes were made last minute, and they may or may not know that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, aye, aye. Motion's carried. Thank you. I guess we now go, city managers report.
Mayor, council, I don't have a report this evening.
Mr. Attorney?
You might want to do a show of hands on that, Mr. Mayor, on that, since.
Show of hands?
Show of hands, since it requires.
Show of hands on the previous floor, please. Got it?
I'll have it.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, you have nothing?
Yes.
Okay. Then we'll come to Mayor and council members, we always have something, don't we? I have a couple of proclamations I'd like to read. Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the basketball of agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, whereas trees reduce erosion of soil, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperatures, clean air, produce oxygen, and provide wildlife habitat, and whereas trees are a renewable source, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Now, whereas trees, and whereas trees in our city increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are source of joy. Now, therefore, I, Alfonso King, here of the city of Goldsboro, do hereby proclaim March 22nd, 2013, as Arbor Day in the city of Goldsboro, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and I urge all citizens to plant trees to promote the well-being of this and future generation. Trees are very, very important. If any of, I'm sure a lot of you have been to Nebraska, they've got a lot of room to plant more trees in Nebraska. They have a lot of open space out there. They, they have, they did get it started. Thank you very much. And I have one more, and I understand we have a representative, and this is 2013 Women in Construction Week, National Association of Women in Construction. Ma'am, are you, yeah, you're, here's the young lady who's representing this organization, and if you'd like to just come and stand so that we'd see you while I read this, that would be fine, thank you. Whereas the Greater Greenville, North Carolina Chapter 335 has distinguished itself for 22 years as the voice of women in construction in the Greenville, Goldsboro, Kinston, Newman region of North Carolina. And whereas the work done by the Greater Greenville, North Carolina Chapter 335 has benefited the city of Goldsboro through community development and educational programs. And whereas the Greater Greenville, North Carolina Chapter 335 has unceasingly promoted the employment advancement of women in the construction industry. And whereas the construction community represented by Greater Greenville, North Carolina Chapter 335, has been a driving force in fostering community development through renovation and beautification projects, promotion of skilled trades, careers, and a positive vision of the future. And whereas the Greater Greenville, North Carolina Chapter 335 has sought to achieve successful results for the Greenville, Goldsboro, Kinston, Newman, North Carolina, North Carolina region and surrounding areas in a cooperative spirit with other organizations. Now, therefore, it is proclaimed that I, Mayor Alfonso King, hereby recognize the Greater Greenville, North Carolina Chapter 335, and its many dedicated volunteers for its steadfast work on behalf and support of women in construction, and do proudly proclaim the week of March 3 through 9, 2013, as Women in Construction Week, and encourage all our citizens to congratulate the organization on its many accomplishments. And ma'am, you represent the group, so we want to congratulate you and thank you for what you have done to contribute to construction. I understand you have a copy of the proclamation. Would you like to make a comment?
We just greatly appreciate you recognizing the contributions that women in construction make, and our efforts to help more women enter the construction industry. We're a minority, but we're growing, and.
There you are.
We have a, this is a national association with over 5,000 members. We've also started organizations in South Africa, and England, and Canada, and Australia, so there's many org, NAWI organizations all around the world now.
Yeah. Well, thank you, and your organization for helping us in construction.
Thank you.
We need all the help we can get. And women do good work, you know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. That's all I have right now.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
No report. Okay.
I've just got one quick comment, and I just want to thank the veterans that were here in uniform, and I think if you haven't seen the Vietnam War, you need to see it. And I heard something the other day, that only two-thirds of the veterans that fought in Vietnam are now dead. There's only one-third left. And it's something you need to see.
Yeah.
I want us to support it, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
No comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, I had the opportunity to attend the Wish meeting held at Dillow Middle School last week, along with you, and other elected officials. That health program in our middle schools is invaluable and a great benefit to the students. And also, I would like to, they mentioned of the Goldsboro High School, Krueger's basketball team. I think they won a tournament, and also, they, they went a long way toward the championship, but, you know, lost the last game.
Well, you can't win them all, but they had a great year, a great season. Okay. Chuck?
Okay. Yeah, two things, Mr. Mayor. The first one is, I just want to thank Scott and everybody that came to our transportation forum this past week. Scott presented there and did his normal, good job of giving everybody, keeping everybody informed, and I appreciate what he did. And John Rasson, we also had the Secretary of Transportation, and I think we're going to be in for some good changes at the Department of Transportation.
You did say good changes.
He's on board. I think he's, he's going.
They're going to get some changes, I can tell you that, anyway.
But it was good, we had a really good attendance, and so just want to thank everybody, especially Scott and his staff for what they did to do that. A lot of work went into that. The second one is, is kind of following up on what Councilman Broadway said on the veterans. You know, they came and they asked us to give a little, an honor of those who've given everything, basically. And I'd just like to make a motion that we give them $5,000 out of our general fund to help, and then commit $5,000 out of travel and tourism, or up to $5,000 for billboards. I think that would get them started, and I definitely think we, you know, we all know we need to be a part of that.
Second, I'll second that. A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Since the county commissioners, our good allies there, challenged us, you know, we're doubling what they put in, and I go back and challenge them to match us now.
Good for you.
There you go, Gene. Well said, well said.
Okay. Ready for, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, aye, aye. Motion's carried. Gee?
Nothing other than.
Just, you just made your.
That's right.
He made his pitch.
I just want to say that this group, they've talked to me a number of times about this, this wall, and it's something that I think everyone needs to see, and unfortunately, I know some of the names, I knew personally some of the names on that wall, so it carries a different meaning for me. In fact, that I was there for a year, it's meaningful to me, and I'm sure it's. And the fact that I was there for a year, it's meaningful to me, and I'm sure it's meaningful to everybody. But if you were there, it's something a little special, I think. If there's nothing else to come before, it's standard.